will not be here, Councilor Rinkley will not be here. The rest of the council is here, we have some guests. We have a rather short agenda dealing only with COVID-19 items. And first is our update from our Emergency Services Director who is not here, so we can skip that for now. Then we'll go on to the bars and restaurants, outdoor seating and what the city can do there. Bill has provided us a draft ordinance and a summary. And Joanna, just in your own words there summarize it, Bill?
Sure, so I mean, the purpose of this was to provide a way that would allow for the issuance of permits for outdoor dining and service of on-sale liquor in outdoor areas without requiring a council to act on each application. So this is set up to allow city administration to review and either approve or deny an application. The idea is this could happen fairly quickly. Council retains the right to review those and to take different action if the council would like. It sets up some standards for what the businesses need to do. It includes the governor's current guidelines and basically in bullet point form. And so I guess we'd be, you know, we'd be asking our businesses to keep those in mind and try to comply with them. And I think that's the, but that's the gist of it, is to allow businesses to expand into outdoor areas. I know some cities have, are, we have one business that probably has a large parking lot area that works for them. We have another business that I don't know, I mean, I have not talked with them, but they may have some limitations in terms of space. So I put some language in here that would allow use of public rights of way that might possibly include part of a street perhaps. I know some cities are shutting down streets or parts of streets to accommodate need for space. I, you know, and I put language in there that allows the city to take into consideration, you know, public safety and other things in deciding whether that can or can't work. And I don't know whether it could in this circumstance, but at least it gives you some options to look at and it gives the businesses options to look at. Now, that was, I was just trying to do that as quickly as I could and get something done that would leave some flexibility. So that's where I ended up.
Okay, thank you. And we did give heads up to the establishments that would be affected, basically for the outdoor dining, plus the three of those and then of those three, two that would be dealing with the alcohol part of it. Heads up to have some type of a plan so that we can act with some knowledge here as we go forward.
It's included in the agenda, it's the last couple pages, they hold it.
Yep, and so any questions of the two entities that are here? Have you had a chance to look through what our proposed ordinance would be? Okay.
You have this in here, Jeff, about temporary expansion of outdoor dining for firefighting and that? Do we on our patios need to have any extra precaution in my building? We have the fire extinguishers and everything in the ceiling and everything else. Is, there's no requirement for any outdoor extra precautions on that part of safety?
It wasn't my, it wasn't my intent to require you to do anything. It was just to, so that city administration in reviewing these, for example, if there was expansion onto city rights of way, that they could, that they were entitled to take into consideration public safety and fire trucks and so forth. So like, for example, if you were going across, in an existing open alleyway or onto a part of a public street or so forth where passage might be necessary, they could, they could define a sufficient width to allow all public safety needs to be met. That was, that was the intent of that.
Okay, so basically then it won't pertain to like my scenario with outside on my patio? With this?
I was not implying any extra requirements for you.
Okay, okay.
If your insurance company says they want you to have whatever fire extinguishers, obviously do it.
Don't have to add extra extinguishers.
You don't have, you don't have to for the city in terms of this ordinance.
Okay, that was one thing I just wanted to barricade. And then is there going to be a restriction on, I added to my list on here? A tent, if needed to be, to put up a tent?
There's, there's not, I'm not intending to restrict your ability to provide covering from weather issues. I, you know, I think, you know, it's obviously going to be a temporary structure and, you know, the right to have it there would end when this ordinance would end.
Okay.
And, you know, the terms of this ordinance ending are basically when indoor seating is again allowed. So you could put up something.
A temporary type deal if we need to?
On your diagram that you provide to city administration when they're considering where it's going to be and so forth. But yeah, I mean, that's, you know, and then obviously.
Talked about tents just the other day. What was allowed and what wasn't allowed?
Who was that?
Deed.
Okay, because I know I got ahold of the Sterns County Health Department and they told me there is zero restriction on their part.
This is from Department of Employment, Economic Development. Can restaurants set up tents to offer dining or screened and covered setting outdoors? Answers yes, as long as at least, at least half of the sides of the tent are open or screened. Otherwise you get into the enclosed and smoking. Yeah, we're gonna talk about. And that one, I should probably forward this to everybody, but there's a lot of questions in here what can and can't be done. But everything pretty much answers in here. Like, does a 50-person maximum include employees? No. Are there restaurants required to keep a lot of reservations? No.
They're not required to?
Keep a lot of reservations? No, they are not. Says no, restaurants are not required to keep a log, nor are they discouraged from doing so. There is no requirement that a business check in and give a verified person's identity with the reservation.
I have an email, Mayor, from yesterday that the Health Commissioner clarified statements during her daily press conference yesterday, saying that the reason for the reservations was to avoid large crowds waiting in line. And therefore, the State Department said there's other ways to detect foodborne illness and other health-related outbreaks. Therefore, there is no requirement to keep a record. And they also do not have to check ID to make sure it's you, other than for alcohol.
So what about inclement or severe weather? Can customers go indoors? Yes, the annoying goal, guidelines, requirements, keep people safe and save lives. In event of inclement weather, customers may move indoors to package food and pay bills while the message exit quickly.
So we don't get to have a party inside?
Not for very long.
Quickly.
It's gotta be fast.
Three hours?
Is that from Deed?
Also can't identify gold.
But it's really good, it's from Deed.
Well, you said that, well, yeah, okay.
But ask, answer all 15 different questions we have.
And those seem to get updated about every other day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They are, they are a work in progress, but they're useful, though they do answer questions.
They have, they still require phone-in reservations and walk-ups, is that correct?
Yes. Require reservations in advance.
In advance, yeah. But it doesn't say how far in advance.
That's correct.
Two minutes, thirty seconds.
Call you right back.
You can call from your car.
Adapted and overcome. Okay.
On the bottom page four, your fence or well-de, how's that called? Temporary fence or otherwise well-defined?
Yep.
The role would be a well-defined area.
I would assume.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm thinking would be, that's defining your area.
Yeah. You know, and obviously you're going to have to provide a diagram for expansion of your liquor license. You know, it has to be contiguous to your existing structure and all that same nonsense that always applies to those. So for any outdoor liquor, the same applies here. So you're going to have to define where that is, you know, I don't know what, I don't know what your insurance company is going to require. If they're going to say, no, we want a measurement in feet or, you know, where you can serve. I guess, I'm not sure how fussy your insurance company is when you redefine your boundaries. I assume they want to know with some particularity what, what your new boundary is for your service, but.
Our insurance company did not, because I called them.
They didn't care that much.
They said, you know, as long as you have a, it roped off, they did want it roped off.
Okay.
And, you know, social distancing and just, you know, safety in mind.
Okay. So you're defining it with a roped-off area and that, that would define it clearly, yeah?
But then on page seven, number ten, letter A, develop and implement the preparedness plan. Does that have to be submitted to the state?
No, just to the city. And I think, I think the businesses submitted those to the city already.
Yep, I see.
I didn't.
Does anything have to be submitted to the state? I thought I heard something.
They just have to be on file.
Must be on file.
And we have to send in the expansion of the liquor license? I think I emailed somebody with the information on where that's got to go.
Department of Health wanted us to.
Fill something out.
Email today.
Oh, mine said it just has to be, the Health Department, Sarah told us this, it has to be on file. And if they walk in, I have to be able to provide it.
But they want the city, they want the city to send it into the Department of Health, like.
On your, on page three on the very top, also for alcohol services, the city approved an expanded area copy of the map of the expanded area. License for alcohol sales has to be sent to the Department of Public Safety. If the premise has a gambling license, the area has to be sent to the gambling enforcement division. I am told that the state regulators intended to sticklers on these requirements, so we would want to be sure that any matters come, make it sensible.
But my understanding is they're expecting cities to send those in, not, not necessarily the businesses, but they want that stuff.
But as far as the gambling goes, there is no gambling.
Digital pull tabs can be, e-tabs can be started as of the first?
On the first, if you have outdoor. So you can just move your router.
I imagine they, they deem that the devices can be clean wiped.
Well, they have a, they had a whole page of criteria, you know, like you can't get them wet, you can't, but they were supposed to have some disposable cloths that they can clean them with. You know, and that's in between every customer and every.
Sure.
More expense.
In regard on the, let's see, Doris, on yours, your bullet point, your last bullet point there requesting reduction and reimbursement for your liquor license, that's something that the council is considering. And basically trying to wait until everything is determined so we can make a, you know, a logical, you know, determination on that. And I think we decided to do the high request, is that correct?
Thought we were due August, we're.
We were going to wait till.
Till it opens wide open.
Yeah, till it opens so we know how much.
Yeah, until you open wide open completely. And then we can figure out how many bumps and then we'll figure out where to end by then.
Okay, and then I, I think I just read now that a city, I can't remember now if it's Cole Spring or St. Joe, that next year they swipe the liquor fee altogether or made it?
A dollar.
One dollar. One dollar. And they're on a fiscal year, starting, what, July 1st?
July, okay.
Yeah, so starting July 1st, there is a dollar for next year. And they are, I believe, reducing this year, some for this year.
Yeah, they're doing appropriate.
And we're right in the middle of our years.
Right, right, we're January, January.
And I know it says in here that Firehouse is planning to seat on their patio. We haven't gotten any kind of mapping or.
That was just for your information, because they're, they're staying on their property. They've already got that category as well, set up for that.
So they're not interested in extending out into.
It's my understanding, my understanding, they're just going to stay on their.
I, I talked to Rachel and to do so on James, James is a county-state aid, technically it's a county-state aid highway, so they would have to go through the county on Washburn. There might be room for, you know, table for two, but she said, I don't have tables to put out there that I would want to risk out, you know, being outside. So she's, last I talked to her, is content with the area that she has.
I didn't see the diagram either, because I didn't know how many tables we can get. You know, just didn't, or when we're going to try to open.
Well, we haven't passed the ordinance, so you may not have to.
But even if you don't pass the ordinance, for instance, Queen Bee's would be grandfathered in due to the fact that it's, I already have an existing patio.
Yep.
Correct?
Well, I understand, but the, you know, the existing would be, is acceptable.
Yep.
What we're trying to do is to.
Expand it.
Allow expansion.
What is number three, your outdoor smoking?
Where are you at?
On the agenda.
On the agenda, outdoor smoking.
Oh, okay.
We're not even there yet.
Yeah, agenda.
I guess that's when they lay the cigarette out outside? Or, you know.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number thirteen, third series, interim ordinance suspending conflicting regulations about outdoor dining and creating a temporary administrative process for expansion of on-sale liquor licenses during a COVID-19 public health emergency.
Second.
Motion by Lebo, second by Hertzberg to approve ordinance number thirteen, third series, interim ordinance suspending conflicting regulations of outdoor dining and creating a temporary administrative process for expansion of on-sale liquor licenses during a COVID-19 public health emergency. Discussion, further discussion?
As an interim ordinance, what is the, does it still have to be published for 10 days?
No.
No.
Okay, so it's once?
They publish it once.
Yeah, and we're publish the summary, I guess, is, because the ordinance is always fairly lengthy. Summary being published and the intent of being, you know, interim is that it's not continuing.
Right. So it goes into effect immediately or?
Correct.
It will be in effect on Wednesday.
On Wednesday.
Once it's published.
Okay.
Anything else? All favor I? I oppose, none, that carried.
Then you should approve this official summary.
The summary.
I'll make the motion to approve the summary of ordinance number thirteen, third series, publication.
Motion by Hertzberg, second by Lebo, to approve the summary of ordinance number fifteen, third series, publication. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all favor I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. And then the application and permit is on page nine. Got a little bit of chance to look through that. One page. Hopefully fairly simple enough.
So the checklist is for the business owners?
The, one question I would have, and I am sure Doris brought it up on hers, and I'm sure the Legion's going to bring it up. The hours of operation are going to have to be pretty, pretty lenient. Whether they're going to be working outside or not, because it was raining, they're going to shut down at.
I think the hours of operation are probably intended to be the maximum.
Oh, okay.
I think.
Until 1:00 AM?
Just hours or the timeframe? Like 10 hours a day?
The, the opening and closing, I think would be the idea, right, Jennifer?
I think that's what the intent was.
Yeah, and, you know, the, I mean, obviously, we, I think we all know that sometimes bars close because there's simply no one there.
Right.
They may choose to close early or weather, because their outdoors may force them to close. But, you know, the idea is that we're just getting the parameters of their intent.
Okay, I think that's what you had.
Mm-hmm.
Well, then I would figure out on that here. I'll make a motion to approve the temporary outdoor dining application permit.
Second.
Opened by Bill Moore, second by Hertzberg, to approve the temporary outdoor dining application permit. Discussion, all favor I?
I.
Oppose, none, and that's carried.
Mayor, one thing, I think we, in the, in the ordinance, it talks about a copy being placed in the library, which we could still probably get a copy to the library, but it's really not open for the public right now. So I think, I don't know that you need a formal motion on it, but I think there should at least be a consensus that maybe you'd send one to the library, but maybe one will be posted on the bulletin board or something at City Hall if people want to see one. There should be some other public place where it is that people currently have access to, I think. Wherever you think would be best. I, I don't know of other places in town where you'd put it where people can come and go.
So currently, all the ordinances that are passed do get posted at City Hall? And then once the publication is done, when the ordinance books, the library gets that supplement.
Okay. The old wishing well that is in the process of remodeling, are they a part of this reopening or?
They're not. They have not come forward at all requesting anything that we're aware of.
I'm not even sure what pressure is going in there, to be honest.
I guess if it gets to that point, we'll have to address it.
And for similar, they would have to go through the application, well, you know, if it's for outdoor dining or if it's for liquor, you know, there, there's a process that would have to be followed anyway.
Yeah, right, and all the, it'd be a tough outdoor dining situation.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wondered if there was any communication.
Okay, then item number two, salons, limited reopening. Opening? Hopefully.
So I have, I wrote out a request. My business has been closed since March 17th. I can finally open June 1st with many rules and restrictions, with the real possibility of being closed down if COVID-19 numbers start going back up. We are limited for the number of clients we can take in per day. So we have no waiting area on the inside. Clients have to wait outside until we call them in. All, all the people that work there and the clients have to wear masks, have temperatures taken and answer questions before being allowed inside. Some of the things we are supposed to do is have windows open for ventilation and have seating outside where we can ask the questions and take temperatures and stuff. We have many older clients and clients with health issues. So having a seat for them to sit outside is needed. Some are getting dropped off by riots, so, and you did answer some of that with, that that's a possibility. All businesses are supposed to be socially distancing, wearing masks, not congregating together unless from the same household. Outside of my business, this has not been the case. We can't have windows open and seating outside due to the lack of others not following the guidelines. When standing outside in groups and smoking, the smoke comes directly into my business, even just when the door is opened and closed. I'm asking the city to create and enforce the no-smoking ordinance in accordance with the Minnesota Clean Indoor Act, statute 144.417 subdivision four, allows for you to do so. It allows for the city of Pansville to forbid smoking within 20 feet of businesses of their openings, such as windows and doors. As a state, we've enacted laws to protect people from secondhand smoke and even raised the age to 21. I would also ask that the congregating in groups outside of businesses be unilaterally discouraged, especially when it's in groups where people are not socially distancing and wearing masks and following the guidelines.
Outdoor, whether the, the, well, I guess first we should find out if the council is interested in, in looking into, an ordinance, it would have to be drafted and brought to the council for consideration.
Can we do interim ordinance like we did for the, especially the patio? That was banned smoking in 20 feet of business entrances?
I think we could, you know, and, I mean, the, one of the things on, on these interim ordinances, which we should probably make a referral to planning to look at, at this issue of outdoor dining as well. It's technically the basis on which you do an interim ordinance is that you feel that the issue needs more study before you pass a permanent ordinance. So in the case of, of the outdoor dining ordinance, I think everybody's belief is that before the life of the interim ordinance would be over, the emergency will end, but there's not a guarantee. So we probably should make a referral of that to, from council to planning just to review in case it gets to the point where we need to start looking at doing something permanent. And then we'd have to do the same thing with that, but we could do it. You know, it's, it's, it's not, there's nothing wrong with, with doing it. We could do it on a, on interim basis and say again that it relates to the COVID-19, the need for businesses to have open windows and all this, you know, I mean, it makes sense. And then we'd look at it on a more permanent basis later, but that, there's nothing wrong with that. The other thing you might do to assist with Carrie's particular problem, we've done this in the past in different, it's been a totally different circumstance, but where we, on a temporary basis, make some parking places in front for business reserved, to be used only by her customers, maybe just two spaces or something so that people could park there, where people that are being dropped off, they, they could maybe sit, maybe they'd be more comfortable sitting in the car for whatever reason than they would be sitting on a, on a bench or whatever you could put outside. I don't know if that would be helpful, but that'd be something you could look at doing. We've had those temporary signs and I think, you know, you could authorize her to use those on a temporary basis while, while she's operating under, under these circumstances. That probably wouldn't be unreasonable. I don't think we're so pressed for parking that people need to park in front of, right in front of her business right now where that'd give her a little breathing room for some of this, if that would help.
That'd be the easiest thing.
Doesn't really help with the smoking.
No, whatever would be, in the car, they could leave an eye line in the car at the windows, though.
Yeah.
But I also have to have my windows open when possible.
So people inside are affected by the outdoor smoke, is her point.
This would help part of her problem. And would be quick to do.
A lot of conversation with the individuals that you're talking about tonight and get them to adjust.
I've had conversations, numerous conversations.
Excuse me, can I just add, you know, that Carrie's, or said 20 feet? I honestly would like to see it further than that because they come walking by my building and hear all it is is smoke. And here goes the cigarette butts, and I've had it with cleaning them up. And I'm sure it's not good for the city to have them down the drain and everywhere else also. So I am with Carrie on that 100%. The smoking, the verbal language that is coming down the streets, it's just, it has to be enforced. It has to be enforced. It's getting tough.
Getting back to the exact subject here, the, the signage and the reserve couple spots that we can do that as a council right now. Correct?
Yes.
I would make that motion then to designate two spots outside of Elizabeth Rose Salon. Three, three spots outside of Elizabeth Rose Salon as reserved parking.
Second.
Motion by Lebo, second by Hertzberg, to designate, and I'm assuming that this is an interim.
Yeah, temporary interim.
Temporary, temporarily designate. Temporary, temporarily designate three spots in front of Carrie's there as reserved parking. We have signage?
We can get some.
We should still have some signs.
We had some from before.
Yes.
Jeans, at least.
I think we gotta remember that is peril parking on that side, so three spots is quite a distance.
It would be, there's one, probably one and a half, one or one and a half years, or one and a half, probably one and a half?
What's in front of you?
Probably one and a half, I mean, you can.
Maybe two.
Is that gonna impact your?
Nah, I don't, I don't regularly have people that can walk a little distance, I'm not, if one of them is in front of my place, I have no problem with that.
Maybe it should be two.
If Bill said there's no problem with him, then he could run three if he ran on that way, because Bill's right here, we wouldn't ever have a problem with the reserve, because it's only gonna be for two or three weeks.
I was thinking that the library is probably gonna be closed till this goes, and so with their spot, I don't know.
But the library has drive up, backup to drop off, so they, I mean, they do need some ability to get in by the library.
You ran from Carrie's south.
The eye clinics aren't open yet?
Pardon me?
The eye clinics aren't open yet?
They, they are.
Well, they are now?
They, they were, I think it's only been open one day, but they did reopen.
Okay. Well, maybe three won't be a problem, then.
You could do, you know, one in front of me and one in front of Carrie, and then maybe the other one goes a little bit past her the other way or something, if that, if that works out.
Sure.
I mean, there's still plenty of parking across the street, too.
Yeah.
It'd be room if it was okay with Bill to block off your area, then it's not a big deal.
Yeah, I don't mind. We'll figure it out.
We will.
And you want that informal resolution? Like in the past, we've done a resolution?
Yeah.
Does that need to be backed for us, then?
No, just authorize the mayor to sign.
And with the stoppage of, when this is over, it's over.
Yeah, once she opens up full time, then we'll be back to normal, is my understanding, I agree.
Yeah, once she doesn't have to check people outside and follow all that stuff, I think.
That would be the idea.
Any other questions? We do have a motion by Lebo, second by Hertzberg, for three spots, all in favor, I?
I.
Oppose, none, that carried. And then do we direct, planning to look at the smoking ordinance, outdoor smoking ordinance?
Can we also, city attorney, put together interim one?
Get some drafts, or some, I don't know, graphs?
Yeah, I'll draft them.
There should be some available.
I'm sure.
Okay, anything else? And this is kinda COVID-related, I got a call from.
Sorry, back to this one, um, do we need any kind of authorization for Carrie to put seating out on the sidewalk in front of the building?
No, we got benches.
We put benches out.
Yeah, we put those, but I don't know, I don't know if she was.
Can I put a reserved sign on it for a salon and then take it down, like, put it up when we're open and take it down when we're closed?
Are you using that for?
You don't have a bench out there right now, do you?
No, but I have one out back that I can put out front.
That's just for your, like, your waiting area, is what you're gonna use it for?
Yeah, because we can't have one inside, we can only have so many people.
Go for it. Is one bench enough, because you gotta maintain your?
Usually it's a husband and wife that come in, and you can't have, like, one or the other sitting there waiting. So one can come in, and then once we have, we have to have, like, fifteen minutes to clean everything in between, then they can come in, and then the other one can settle aside.
Put a reserved sign on it.
Thank you.
Okay, I got a call from Jerry Mayor, and he was through the fire department. The old, this thing.
Yep.
They used to take this up once a year, part of the parade, be sure the wheels turned and all that.
It's a pain.
It's a pain.
Good to get apart.
He would like to do something like a informal fire department parade on the morning of July fourth, ten o'clock. Wondering what, if, you know, like the graduation parade, or the, you know, the car club, if that's something they could just drive by the nursing homes and whatever, without having to go through all the, they're not closing any streets down.
What did we do for the car club? I don't know, I don't know if they, they just did it, I believe.
They just did it, you know.
Same, same applies, just do it.
Potentially involve some of the fire department.
I mean, we normally would require a permit, probably, but I don't know. I don't know how big it is, I mean, I don't know how big it's gonna be, how many vehicles are gonna be.
I would see if you ran every vehicle, it'd be seven.
Okay.
Pretty close, yeah.
The car club and, nor have the school come forward for any type of permit. And I know that the school's planning a graduation parade, but not, nobody's come for a permit.
And the reality is, like, the car club, stuff like that, I mean, while it was a quasi parade, there's no defined route, which I'm guessing is gonna be the same case with the fire department, they're just gonna drive. So, you know.
And a lot with the permit is because you want certain streets blocked off.
Yeah.
Like the car club, they just, they still stop for stop signs and.
Sometimes.
They aren't blocking streets.
We were, we were not blocking streets, yeah. I, and I will say, the parade on Saturday or Sunday with graduation's gonna be a little bit different, but the street blockages are gonna be temporary to get vehicles across. You know, and then over to the high school, so.
You kinda do the same thing for the, what'd you say?
Sunday.
Teams, when they have the state or whatever, you know, it's basically just authorize them to do it, we don't have to pull it off the street, they're making it a permit or whatever, so.
Kinda have some fun around here.
Yeah.
I'm popping my car, turn the flashers on, follow them.
There you go. You could maybe even pull that thing, it could help.
First you gotta take it apart and get it out of here. Completely.
All right, anything else? If not, we're gonna thank you all. Stay healthy.
We didn't cover number three.
What was number three?